All right, well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Order of Business September 13th, 2022, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. Madam Clerk, please take a walk off.
A little feedback there. Dave Abdullah.
Here.
Hassan Ahmad, currently not here. Moby Dune.
Here.
Nancy Breyer.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
And Tom Wensel.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to have that led by one of our veterans, Mr. Edward Jackson.
We do this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jackson. Next up on the agenda is item number three, Agenda Approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the amended agenda for the regular meeting of September 13th, 2022, as submitted. Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Bedun, seconded by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next up on the agenda is item number four, Approval of the Minutes.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the regular meeting of August 23rd, 2022, as outlined in 4A.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat and seconded by Councilman Bedun. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Public Hearings and Comment on Agenda Items Only. So again, if anybody has anything to comment on Agenda Items, you will have two minutes. I'm going to go ahead and start with Zoom first, and then we'll go ahead and go to people in the audience. So anybody on Zoom, Madam Clerk?
There are none, any hands?
Nobody on Zoom that has a comment? Okay, excellent. Anybody? I'm sorry, did somebody say something? Okay, anybody in the audience that has a comment on any of the Agenda Items? On once, twice? Okay, thank you very much, that works. Next up is item number six, Fund Transfers and Current Claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Bedun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the current claims 6-1 through 6-100, as submitted.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Bedun, supported by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion on that?
Robert Coniston.
I'm sorry, Coniston, sorry about that. By Councilman Coniston, seconded by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item number seven, Consideration of Bids.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for the American Rescue Plan Consultation Management Service to BLN Emergency Managing Management and authorize a Comptroller's Office to return all bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders. In addition, authorize Corporation Council to prepare a contract and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city, as outlined in 7A.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion on that? I'm just going to say just a couple of words. I had a couple of conversations with our Chief of Staff, Mariana, in regards to this. And she mentioned to me that herself, our Director Hassan Jamal, and our City Engineer, Ali Deeb, all three of them graded all three contractors, and they used their own separate systems, or same system, I say, but separately, not combined. They didn't discuss it together. They all three of them separately discussed, I'm sorry, analyzed it. And amongst themselves, they came up with BLN as the recommended group. What they liked about that particular one is their fees were pretty reasonable. One of the contractors that's part of this particular group is somebody that's very familiar with Dearborn Heights, and they liked their pricing, and they liked the fact that they have engineers as a part of their program. So they were very comfortable with this, and I'm very comfortable myself personally with all three, two gentlemen and a young lady. So with that being the case, any other discussions on that?
Council Chair, I'll just echo a lot of what you're saying. This is something that I know is much needed. I know the administration would have had to put this forward, and I am definitely in support of this as well. So thank you to the administration on this.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none?
Council Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Council.
Can you give the audience a brief description about what this actually is?
Sure, no problem. So this is in regards to the management services on ARPA money, which is specifically American Rescue Plan Consultation. Basically, what happens, we have received money from the federal government. It's going to be a total of 24 million and some change. I don't know the exact number. Do you know, Treasurer, the exact?
It's about 24 and a half.
In some, yeah, 24 and a half. And this is basically a consulting company that will help the administration in selecting the right projects and administering the right projects. In addition to that, they will be involved in turning in and putting together the reports that have to be turned in to the federal government in order for them to be able to, of course, they've already given us the fund, but to allow us to allocate the funds in the proper manner. It is something that has, that needs a lot of hours, and there's companies, including these particular three companies, that have specialties in that particular field. I don't know if that answers it in a summary?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Council Chair.
Yes, Councilman, go ahead.
Yeah, and just to continue what you said, so the requirements to properly comply with what we can spend the money on, and there's also some money available from Wayne County. This is a lot of money, and they're very specific. So this is a great idea and very much needed.
Sure. I'd also like to add, for members of the audience and council members, you know, in my conversation with Mariana, and I commend her, she did a lot of homework on this, is that obviously, this is not the end all as far as how the money will be spent. This is the starting point. So in other words, a decision has not been made by the council members or the administration as far as which direction that money is going to be used for. And it will be some, as far as I know, Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, some audience participation too, eventually.
Well, Council Chair. I mean, everything that you're saying is correct. So in addition to that, this particular company has got a lot of experience in various states with the ARPA money that actually came through various municipalities. So what they try to do is they try to multiply, you know, some of the money. So if we, let's say we pitch in 2 million for a project, you know, they try to get another million, sometimes 2 million, from another entity, like say the county, federal, or the state. And on top of that, so every penny has to get accounted for by the federal government. So with this company, they, what we're going to do is we're going to meet with every director. We're going to go through to see what projects, with whichever company we choose, to get through all the projects that is required by the city, then we will present that to the city council.
Right, so, and I'm just clarifying that, you know, it has not been determined as far as how the funds are going to be used as of yet. This is just a company that's going to help us manage through this particular project.
Correct. Manage and maximize.
Yes, and maximize, absolutely.
Council Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
I'm not 100% sure, but I'm sure you probably know exactly what can ARPA money be spent on? It's limited, isn't it?
Sure, absolutely. It's restricted, and that's what the company is going to make sure that we are spending it on what's required by the federal government. So like I said, every penny you spend it, it has to be in accordance with the federal regulations. So that's what this company is going to help us.
What's an example?
An example, water sewer, broadband, basically.
Infrastructure.
You know, well, not infrastructure. So mostly water sewer.
Okay, that'd be a structure.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, not like buildings or anything like that.
It's directly tied to losses that different governments, funds that were lost, or issues that they had through the COVID-type situation. So just a hypothetical, not throw the mayor under the bus, but it can't be used, for example, to pay a mayor's salary or repay my salary or anything like that. It's got to be used for COVID-related items. And it's extremely strict, as I understand it.
Very strict. It's very restrictive.
Yeah, very.
So the key is COVID-related situations. That's the key.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments on this? All right, hearing none, motion made by Councilman Muscat and seconded by Councilman Coniston, with no further discussion, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion.
Last year. Motion carried.
All right, next item on the agenda is item 9B, Chief of Staff Hernandez, Third Amendment Sublease Agreement, Wayne County Prosecutor's Office.
Council Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the, my friend Ray. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the Third Amendment to the Sublease Agreement between the City of Dearborn Heights and the County of Wayne for use of the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office to sublease portions of the Justice Center. Third Amendment would continue our relationship through August 30th, 2026, and increase the monthly rent to $1,050, to which will be tacked in reimbursement, City Prosecutor Account Number 101-000-684-500. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city, as outlined in 9B.
Support, second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Coniston, seconded by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Go ahead. Yeah, this, I was around when the Justice Center was built. It's a combined facility for the court and the police station. It's been said that there's a lot of room there, and this is an excellent use of that room. The police in out county like having a prosecutor's office, you know, out this way, and we were glad to have this tenant. Good to have this tenant.
And it does create good teamwork between our police department and Prosecutor's Office. I do want to make a comment. I spoke with the Chief of Staff. There was a little bit of an issue with the payment. They were a little bit behind as one of the emails came in, but they have brought it up to date as of the last contract, and then they're asking for an amendment here. And there's an agreement between them and the administration, so everything is going in the right direction. But just wanted to comment on that. They are back to work in the right order, in the right direction. Any other comments on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I'd like to ask the Treasurer, is this one of the leases that you were concerned with as far as not knowing, or it wasn't stated?
It was an expired lease product.
Can you come to the mic, please?
So the city has several leased products, or, excuse me, properties, and this was one of them that had expired several years ago. And I do give lots of credit to our Chief of Staff for putting that together and bringing it up to speed because it was severely delinquent because it had expired. And that has been made, or at least for the previous years, has been made, brought current, which is good. But yes, this is one of the properties, and we're working through the list and making progress through that list that the council had made a motion on several months back. So there is improvements. Answer your question, yes.
Now, they agreed to pay the $69,000. Did we receive that?
We received $32,000 of it. Then that's going to be your arrears. And so there's two more payments we're expecting, correct?
Once amendments are done.
There's two more coming, two more payments, yes.
All right, thank you.
Is that it? All right, thank you.
Yeah, come on up, Mariana.
Hello, yeah, so in paragraph two, where it explains the rent, what happened is we had a contract that ran from 2713 through 2020. That is the item that was in arrears that they have now become current. This amendment is to extend that contract through 2023 with a specific rent amount. So the first two years are for $950. The last year, which is the one that we're coming into, is for $1,050. And then from 2023 to 2026, it will continue at the $1,050. So that's the only difference that we did. We increased it by $100 in rent.
Right. And what the Treasurer was referencing is what Chief of Staff Mariana has put together is something that's much more clear as far as who owes what and who's responsible for collection, so that we do not repeat mistakes that had been done in the past. And we've got much better systems in place for a collection. So I commend everybody that was involved in putting that together. I know it's a lot of work, but thank you for putting that together.
Council Chair.
Go ahead.
Two questions. Do you know the amount of square footage they rent?
Yes, in the original agreement that we have displayed how much it is, I forgot to bring it with me. But yes, the original agreement has the exact location of where they're at.
And they're keeping the same footprint, the same, and that's, you don't know how many square feet it is?
I can get it to you tomorrow. It was in the original contract.
Do they pay any utilities, or just lump rent?
No, it's just the rent. And again, this is a mutual benefit agreement for us because we use the Prosecutor's Office, and having them in-house is very helpful for us. So that's why the rent is not really for profit. It's just to have them there, really.
Thanks for clearing that up, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Mariana. With no further discussions, I presume, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next up on the agenda is item 9C. This is City Engineer Deeb, Great Lakes Water Authority Water Service Contract Amendment Number Four.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman, go ahead, please.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve Amendment Number Four to the Water Service Contract between Great Lake Water Authority and the City of Dearborn Heights, which governs the purchase and delivery of potable, portable, I think is how they say.
Potable.
Potable, okay, water to our residents. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the amendment on behalf of the city, as outlined in 9C.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Muscat. Any discussions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 9D. This is City Engineer Deeb, Street Repair Contract with Hard Rock Construction Company.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the Street Repair Contract Change Order Number Three with Hard Rock Construction Company in an amount of $860,090. In addition, approve the payment per attached scope fee and authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from account number 202-202-880.500.
Second.
As outlined in 9D.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat and seconded by Councilman Bedun. Any discussions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried.
Council Chair. You know, I had something to ask the Director Deeb. I mean, should I wait? It's kind of, you know, it's a.
Is it on this side? Because this one has already been voted on.
Yeah, oh, no, it was just some other thing. Should I wait till at the end of the meeting, when we have our?
You could, I mean, it's probably better.
Yeah, okay.
We could have a question right now if you wanted, but it's already been voted on.
I'll wait, I'll wait. Yeah, no, I know that, yeah.
You know what, is that on the same subject?
It's related, I'll wait till the end.
Okay, no problem. All right, next up on the agenda is item 9E. This is from Comptroller King, Budget Amendments, General Fund and Water/Sewer Operating Fund.
Council Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council amend the 2022-2023 General Fund and Water and Sewer Operations Budget, as outlined in 9E.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Coniston, seconded.
We didn't finish the whole thing. Should I read those?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Including A, Funding Water/Sewer Operating Fund Account 52-537-981-006, Ann Arbor Trail Highland Water Main in the amount of $1,263,855. B, Funding General Account 101-440-731-000, Emergency Storm in the amount of $25,000. C, Funding General Account Number 101-753-932-000 in the amount of $2,570,000, as outlined in item 9E.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Coniston, seconded by Councilman Bedun. Any discussions on that?
Council Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman.
This total is right around almost $4 million. And this money is coming out of, is it coming out of their operating budget, or?
So these are budget items that had already been budgeted for and contracted for, and this is just to balance out the budget. It is not us approving right now to spend money on these items. These items have already gone through the city council channels and administration channels, and we approved it as a council body. This is just to adjust the budget. And if you'd like a more technical answer, I could bring up the comptroller to answer, if you'd like.
Yeah, because this is, you know, it's $4 million. I'd like that myself and the residents know exactly what's going on with this. Thank you, thanks, Council Chair.
Sure.
Hi.
Hi.
What can I, what questions do you have?
Okay, well, this was voted on apparently before, and now it's, this is just taking action on the budget to get that money available?
That is correct.
Okay, okay, that's basically what I wanted to know, yeah.
Okay.
And this is, this is already, there's no, it's an amendment. What, I mean, why is there an amendment? What does that mean, what exactly? It's a, let's see, Ann Arbor Trail. This, okay, these are three projects that were voted on and approved. And we're just okaying the money to be spent? Is that what this is? Right now, we did that once before, and I just, I'm not sure how this is working here. Why are we, why are we doing this right now? What are we doing right here, doing this?
Well, we're mending the budget. So these funds have to be able to be in the budget in order to spend. So the golf course, the $2.5 million, was already approved last meeting. So we have to put that into the budget so that we can fix the golf course. And then the other two are, well, the one for the Trail Highland Water Main, the $1.2 million, that was a project that had started last year. And it is, it's being finished this year. So we have to put the money back into the budget in order to finish that project. And then the emergency storm, the $25,000, that was something that happened in July and August because we had that storm that we didn't have a budget for. So we're putting money back in there so that we can cover that $25,000.
Okay, well, I know we didn't budget for the $25,700 that was voted on recently.
Right.
Where's that money coming from to amend the budget? Where's it coming from to be put into this?
The fund balance.
The fund balance, okay.
Which is the general fund.
Yeah, that's what I was, you know, I mean, I know I didn't vote on all these things here. That's, I just wanted to make it clear to everyone that this money is taken out of the fund balance. Now, the other items, the $25 million and the $1.263 million.
It's $25,000 and it's $1.26.
$25,000, I'm sorry, yeah, $25,000 and the $1.26. That money is in which account is that in? The Sewer Operating Fund?
The 592 for the Water Main is in the Water Department. So that will be coming out of the Water Fund. And then the $25,000 will be coming out of the general.
Now, the money, the $2,570,000 that's coming out of the general fund, I mean, that's money that we've got in there, extra, so to speak?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, all right, I just want to know, that's for the golf course?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And for the record, I just wanted to make sure, clarification for the clerk's office. It says on there, O'Naidah, it's actually Issa Brothers.
Yeah.
That's correct.
We did change that on, that was brought to our attention, that it was.
Okay.
And we changed on the backup that was posted online.
Beautiful. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So motion made by Councilman Coniston
and seconded by Councilman Bedun. Any other discussions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 9F.
Council Chair.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, no problem.
Court Administrator Atkins, 2022 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding.
Council Chair.
Councilman Bedun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the amended contract for 2022 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding, CESF. Grant the court award in the amount of $12,200 for the purchase of COVID cleaning products. In addition, authorize the court Administrator Atkins to sign the contract on behalf of the city, as outlined in 9F.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Bedun and seconded by Councilwoman Nancy Breyer. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on agenda is item 9G, DPW Director Conrad, 2022 Water Master Plan.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the update to the City of Dearborn Heights Water Distribution Master Plan and reliability study as required by the MDEQ. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the warrant upon receipt, the treasurer to issue payment at a cost not to exceed $28,700 as outlined in 9G.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Muscat. Is there any additional discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on agenda is item 9H, DPW Director Conrad, 2022 Pazer Road Ratings.
Council Chair.
Councilman Beedun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the completion of the 2022 Pazer Road Rating Survey. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the warrant upon receipt and the treasurer to issue payment at a cost not to exceed $17,700 from the account 202-202-895000 as outlined in 9H.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Beedun and supported by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on that? Just a little bit for the residents, this is what the, you know, for residents, they call in all the time on different streets that they want taken care of. And obviously, as an administration, they would love to change every single street and every single block in the city, but obviously then the money would go back to the taxpayers to have to pay for that. So with that being the case, and because we have a budget, we have to balance it out, you know, try not to charge too much taxes, but make sure all the roads that really, really need it are done first and then go in that order. And this is the DPW Director Conrad's program and previous directors also. Basically, they bring in this company that assesses all the different roads and then determines which roads have priority over others, just the general English version of that. Any other discussions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on agenda is item 9I, Fire Chief Brogan, Permission to Accept AFG Grant.
Council Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council accept the AFG grant and authorize Fire Chief Dave Brogan to sign the required documentation on behalf of the city. In addition, authorize the comptroller to fund the AFG grant reimbursement account 101-000-635-001 by $107,938, the anticipated award amount, and expend the 10% match as outlined in 9I.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion on that? I just want to point out to the audience, you guys have no idea how good of a grant writer and, and a total team effort that we have in the fire department, the amount of grants that these guys and gals and specifically Lisa brings in, bringing in a lot of money into the city through grants. So I congratulate them and commend them on that, thank you. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on agenda, Fire Chief Brogan, Purchase and Payment of Plimovent AFG Grants. See what I mean?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase of Hastings Plivant Exhaust Extraction System for Fire Headquarters for the total of $97,717, with $87,945 to be paid from the AFG grant line 101-335-940.080, and the remaining $10,072 to be paid from the capital outlay 101-335-981.000. In addition, authorize the mayor and a comptroller or clerk to sign the warrants upon receipt and a treasurer to issue payment as outlined in 9J.
Support.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
It's hard.
Motion, yeah. Motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on agenda is item 9K, Fire Chief Brogan, Purchase and Payment of Bunker Gear.
Council Chair.
Councilman Beedun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase of bunker gear from Phoenix Safety Outfitters for a total cost of $22,856 to be paid from the clothing account In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the warrants upon receipt and the treasurer to issue payment as outlined in 9K.
Support.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Beedun and seconded, I presume, by Councilman Constant. Seconded by Councilman Constant.
It's very difficult, excuse me.
Go ahead.
For years, we kept saying support when we were supposed to be at least saying second. So it's, it's going to be a little bit of a adjustment for us to say the proper terminology, so bear with us, please.
Thank you for the great conversation, Council.
So, motion made by Councilman Beedun and seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, motion, I'm sorry, hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on agenda is item 9L, Police Chief Hart, Payment for Squad Cars and Budget Amendment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Breyer.
Yes, I make a motion that the City, Dearborn Heights City Council approve the budget amendment for the FY fiscal year 2223 budget to increase the federal forfeiture capital outlay account 265-331-981.000 by $183,430. In addition, approve the payment for five squad cars in the amount of $175,000 to be paid out of the federal forfeiture account. Furthermore, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the warrant upon receipt, and the treasurer to issue payment is outlined in 9L.
Support.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Beedun. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat, go ahead.
I had a conversation with our chief last week, and I don't know if he will want to comment on this or not, but I also contacted the clerk's office about the squad cars. And I don't ever remember city council really approving this. But we do have, now have the cars, and looks like we're going to have to pay for them. But I mean, if our police chief can address that issue, I'd appreciate it, or the mayor.
Well, I can start, chief. So one of the things, I mean, some of the stuff that I can say, actually, that currently with what we found out with this vehicle, you know, when the chief came on board, you know, there's, he's been really busy trying to see a lot of things. I mean, one of the things that he says, you know, every time he looks at something, he finds something. So this is one of them. Some vehicles showed up, they were ordered by the previous management team, we won't say who, and they never went in front of city council for approval. They just decided to order these vehicles. It's never been, actually gone through us before. And when the chief went back, he looked, we couldn't really find any authorization for these vehicles. You know, I know several you contacted, myself and the chief, and we pretty much told you, you know, with, again, going through the specifics in this meeting, what outcome was. You know, we did receive the vehicles, they are being retrofitted right now with codes, you know, lights and sirens and that kind of stuff. So we, we have, the chief, actually, he can probably chime in. We're going to use some of the money from the forfeiture instead of using most of it from our, our budget, because these were ordered, they were ordered without council approval.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to make.
Thank you, Mayor, go ahead.
I just want to let everybody know that before I caught it, the chief of police actually caught it, and he just confirmed my suspicions that it never came before council. So the chief is doing a fabulous job on, on trying to clean up all of this. And I tip my cap to you, sir, you're doing a great job, and keep up the good work, sir.
Okay, so I had some conversations with the chief from the police department in regards to this. The challenge that I've got with this particular one is that not only that the city council obviously didn't approve it, most importantly, where the challenge lies is there's not an actual formal system in place. So as we see with the backup, this was ordered back on 11/17/21. It was ordered, obviously, by the police department, but there's no actual formal system in place, and the system in place should be where it goes through the city council body, because we are the administrators of all the funding in the city, and it's a little concerning. Now, on a positive note, in regards to the residents, there is some positives in all this in that the cars are needed by the police department, so it's not something that's not needed. That's a positive. Another positive note is, as a lot of you are aware, the pricing on cars has gone up quite dramatically, I know myself firsthand. So with that being the case, we're getting, it worked out good for us in that we're getting better pricing because they had been ordered back then, so it kind of worked in our favor. But the system failed us, and I hope that our police administration, I've spoken to the chief about this, could have better systems in place, better checks and balances, so that no one person or even two people within one part of our government can have the authority to make such a substantial purchase versus going through the checks and balances that we have in place via administration, which is what the police department would be through the mayor's office, and of course, the other main checks and balances, which is going through the city council just to make sure that we approve such a purchase.
Council Chair. So we already took, we are, we did go back and we're looking at processes and procedures. Obviously, that was done, you know, last year. And our attorney, our civic attorney, myself and our chief, we actually had a deep discussion to go through this. There's going to be, we are going to investigate this further, you know, because of what happened was not acceptable, obviously, you know. So we are, we are going to investigate this, and we are taking action, and we are going to implement procedures to make sure this does not happen even four, five, 10 years from now. We are going to put processes in place to make sure. And we even, the chief went beyond that, talked to the dealer and made sure that, that they're aware that what happened was not the process that we were supposed to be going through.
And for those in the audience, the process is, it starts with the administration, police department, the mayor's office, they come to an agreement as far as what's needed, they bring it to the council body, then the council body approves those purchases, and it starts going through the system. Unfortunately, in this particular case, that's, that's not what happened. And again, fortunately, we need these cars, so there's no quote unquote "loss", but I, I, that scares me, there's not a good system in place, and I'm glad the chief is on it, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman, go ahead.
Although it wasn't done properly, when I read the backup and the costs we're spending on repairs to the vehicles and the age of some of these vehicles, these are badly needed. So I'm glad we did get them.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, I have a question for the chief, Chief Hart. You know, the, the federal forfeiture capital outlay account. Well, can you explain that account? What is that account?
So these are restricted funds that are the federal government, and if they're federal funds and state funds, there's state guidelines on what we can and can't spend the money on. So sometime, if it's a state, it could be a push off from, from some type of, you know, vehicle impound or seizure. Sometimes it's cash, if it's federal, and one of our federal narcotics task force officers is involved in cases, then that money comes back to the community, and we're able to use criminals' money to supplement and fund things that normal taxpayers might be expected to.
Okay, so this is not a city account, this is a federal account. If in the city of Dearborn Heights, if we have an arrest or something, it's a federal offense, and the fines or the forfeiture, the selling of the vehicles or something go toward, to this federal fund, we get that money back sometimes if you apply for it, is that how it works?
So it is, it is a city fund.
It is a city fund?
That's tracked here, and we make deposits into it from state or federal partners, and then we have to follow the same rules to spend those funds as far as the $1,500, whatever the council rules are.
How much is in our fund now, do you know?
Well, you have your month, end of month, we're coming in this week, and I'll be able to tell you. Unless you want to call me tomorrow, and I'll, I don't know off the top of my head.
So, how much?
Approximately 650,000.
650,000, oh, that's good. So none of this money for these, you know, for these vehicles is actually coming out of the general fund or taxpayers', so to speak, right?
If you approve this tonight, we're going to take this money out of the federal forfeiture fund. Previously, I believe it was in capital outlay, so it would have been taxpayer money. So I want to move it and take it out of the forfeiture fund. Now, we do have some other projects that we're going to be funding with the federal. I personally don't want to sit on a lot of money, although it's very nice to have it in the bank. I think that anytime we can supplement purchases within the guidelines of the federal and the state law, that we're being good partners with the DPW and other department heads here if we can supplement taxpayer funds with forfeiture funds.
Is, is there going to be any additional cost per vehicle to retrofit them?
Yes, it's about $26,000.
Per vehicle?
To what's called an upfit of a vehicle.
Where does that money come from?
I believe that is in contractual services, if I remember correctly. I'm looking at Mariana, who's nodding her head, yes. One of the things that I'm very committed to is obviously fiscal responsibility. So we're going to be going out for bids on our upfitting services. We have to be very prudent with our tax dollars. So to my knowledge, I don't think we've done that in the past. So there are outfitters out there, and we need to make sure that we're going out for bid and getting the best price to do this.
All right, so just, so per vehicle, it's roughly about?
About $26,000.
$26,000 on top of the 38, so roughly a $60,000 or so per vehicle.
Yeah, and.
How long do these vehicles last?
You know, we have, we still have a Crown Vic running around out there, and the officer, the officer doesn't want to give it up. He's like, "Chief, please don't take that Crown Vic away from me, he absolutely loves it." Maybe we'll do something like maybe Taylor PD did, you know, and kind of auction off one of the famous Gardner White Charger.
Oh, yeah.
You know, really, we look at them from a cost analysis perspective, is I let our vehicle maintenance officer, Officer Frank Kowiak, determine which vehicles are failing us, if they're out of warranty, where is the best place for these new vehicles to be put into service in the fleet? So he's much closer to that responsibility than I am, he's trusted with that, and then he'll, he'll make the determination. So some communities have a mileage threshold, sometimes it's a cost analysis, you know, on how much, you know, the vehicle's costing us to maintain. And personally, for me, I would order my interceptors, which what's called Ready for the Road, which comes prewired, which reduces the cost of the upfitting. So that's, that's kind of my philosophy, is let's get that vehicle in, and then it takes less time to upfit, and the wiring's already there from the factory, so we can put those cars in the service a little faster.
Now, is it ideal, is it ideal that we, we keep these vehicles only as long as they're under warranty?
No, that's not the case, no. It's, we keep vehicles beyond warranty, and we've had excellent luck with, with our Ford products. We've had some EcoBoosts go out where they've honored the warranty beyond the mileage.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Councilman. So motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Beedun. Any other further discussions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. I'd like to remind all council members, let's try to make calls ahead of time so we can get to the answers to a lot of our questions, and let's try to keep it to no more than two comments per item, please.
Council Chair, I just, I'd just like the residents to get these ideas. I could call him all day long, and it's nice to have the residents here.
I understand, but just, that's what we agreed on during the study session, so try to keep it as efficient as possible. Okay, next, and this is not meant towards you specifically, it's council members as a whole. Next item is item 9M, Police Chief Hart, 911 Call Management System Service Agreement.
Council Chair.
Councilman Beedun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the five-year service agreement for the new hardware for the 911 management system with Motorola for a total cost of $404,958 to be paid out of the contractual service account 101-30818.000. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the service agreement on behalf of the city upon review by the corporation council. Furthermore, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the warrants upon receipt and the treasurer to issue payment as outlined in 9M.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Beedun and seconded by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion on that? Police Chief, there he is. Police Chief, just for the residents and for myself, I've not been in there any time recently, just at least a minute update on the dispatch. I know this is a part of dispatch. What's the latest and greatest on that as far as us being as caught up as possible we can, as we can to the latest in technology?
Yeah, so this, this, what you just voted on is, or I'm sorry, that we'll vote on is whether or not to enter into this contractual agreement for service. This is 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365-day-a-year coverage for our dispatch center. If we have a problem where our 911 lines go down, or we're having a problem with a piece of equipment, we make a phone call that, as you would expect and want in your dispatch center, those items are handled immediately. We have another agreement that will be going in front of the TIFRA board tomorrow for the actual hardware, the things that are going to be bolted into our dispatch center for roughly $176,000. So again, trying to be as prudent as possible with the taxpayer dollars and have this maintenance agreement so it continue to get service, the dispatchers are going to get the latest and greatest in the dispatch center.
And Mr. Dib, I presume you're still working on the construction part of the project, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you, Chief, thank you, Mr. Dib. Okay, any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on agenda is members of the public. First, I would like to start with comments from council members.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Quickly, I've had a few phone calls this past week, and people are not aware of what the new, what we did with the tree ordinance. Can we have that explained real quick to the public by someone, if it's possible?
Conrad? Yes, we have our director, Robert Conrad.
Good job today.
Yeah, thank you.
Proud of you.
Thank you.
Robert Conrad, Director of DPW. So the amendment to the tree ordinance, basically, or the real crux of it is, is it gives the residents the opportunity for them to remove a tree that the DPW, you know, still deems healthy, not a hazard.
With a permit, correct?
Right, with a permit, with, that's, that's, you know, they deem as, you know, healthy and not a hazard. And they can come in, apply for a permit, and have that tree removed at their cost. You know, we will still monitor those trees, and if they do fall ill or, you know, need removing, then we will take them out at our cost. But if they're healthy, you know, we have to concentrate on diseased and dying trees, which, you know, that list accumulates on a daily basis, you know. So when someone says, well, you, you know, "I've been waiting for my tree for years", that's because new trees that are in worse shape than yours have come in to our office and take a precedent over your tree that may have been on the list for two years. We're still continuing to maintain our trimming process, you know, with the staff I have, and they're doing a phenomenal jobs. I mean, each storm, we still get damaged, but not to the extent that we used to get, they tell me. I can't speak from experience because I haven't been here long enough, but they tell me that it's less, so I have to trust them. But, yeah, the basic crux is, is the ordinance now allows people to remove trees at their cost if they wish to.
And replace it.
With a permit.
And replace it.
Right. I guess, you know, that's also upon our review, you know, I mean, there's some trees that are planted out there under power lines. If you took down a tree that was under a power line, we may not require you to replace that, because that's just a bad place for a tree to be. So, you know, I mean, we will, that's the process of the permit, we go out and look, we. We go out and look, we agree to have it removed and we'll let you know whether it needs to be replaced or not.
And the permit has got to be pulled at DPW or at the building engineering?
At, at the DPW.
Okay, that's, again, that's.
On Van Born.
On Van Born, so that's, that's what I was, the crux of everything.
If you contact our office and you can't make it to our DPW, we can always fax you an application, you can fill it out and send it back. And I don't, could they make a payment on the online portal? Not yet, okay. They still have to come into either our office or the clerk's office to make a payment if there's a payment for the, for the permit. But they can get a permit, you know, emailed to them if they can't make it into our office.
Okay, thank you.
Council Chair.
Mr. Conrad. Another thing here, don't forget, school is back in session. Please drive accordingly. Let's not run any more yellow and red lights and make sure we stop at the stop signs before we make our right turns. So, that is another one big concern. Another item, Warren Valley Golf Course, the greens are being re-sotted and are going in. I see someone shaking his head, I got pictures, sir, if you don't want to believe it.
Okay, nothing from the audience.
Nothing from the audience, but I'm just saying, I have pictures to prove, the greens are being installed, okay? I have the pictures to prove it, I was out there myself and I've physically seen them, so that's not a lie, okay? And we have, and City Council has, you know, rumor was out there that we've also have voted on doing something other than a golf course, already voted on it. That is absolutely not true. We have not voted on anything of that nature. And another thing that's really bothering me, and this is going to be at the administration and the Treasuring Department, checks that are being issued to the city of Dearborn Heights for any properties that are being rented should be directly deposited to the treasurer's office, how I feel. They're made out to the city of Dearborn Heights, they're not made out to Recreation or other departments. They should be taken to the Department of Treasury at City Hall here. And if need be, I want to instruct our attorney, Mr. Farina, to look at these contracts and strike that out if they have to deliver them to somebody else, because there's no checks and balances. I think the treasurer's more capable or office of tracking these when the checks come directly to them, they can take care of it better and there is no chances of being lost checks of that nature. This has come up in the past and I'm very upset about it. So, any checks that's made payable to the city of Dearborn Heights should be deposited right here in City Hall, okay? And that's how I feel, I feel very strongly about this. So, that's directed to the administration and to our Treasury Department. And if they want to speak about it, that's fine, but that's how I feel about it and if there's got to be something done on this legislative body, I will try to draw something up and we can vote on it. Thank you. Thank you.
Council Chair.
Go ahead. Well, I just wanted to take this opportunity just to give the mayor an opportunity to introduce our new corporate, I'm sorry, Corporation Counselor. Mr. Mayor?
He's been working a lot of hours between the City Hall and the police station. I think he's probably totaling over 10 to 12 hours a day.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the introductions. It's an honor to be here and to work with you. I'm a citizen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other counts from council members?
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I know at our last study session, we said we're not going to keep it too lengthy, but this one's a little lengthy, so I'm, but I'll be quick. First and foremost, congratulations to St. Linus and a successful festival. I actually won a prize. The guy said, you pay the 20 bucks, if you make it or miss it, either way you're getting the prize, so I made it and I got the prize. The second, I, I want to tip my hat over to Mr. Conrad, believe it or not, nobody bumps heads more than me and Mr. Conrad, you know? Somebody calls me about a tree incident, I call Mr. Conrad, there's a really long list. Sometimes I just get a little emotional, Mr. Conrad, Mr. Conrad, Mr. Conrad. Believe it or not, I called up on one, my buddy lives across the street from a lady, we watch football there every Sunday, now that football has started, every Sunday, well, the first last Sunday, after the Lions lost, the lady walked in to me and said, when are they going to trim my tree? I said, I'm not going to. The Lions lost. And so, I said, I can't go through this for 17 weeks. I called Mr. Conrad, I said, I'm being hounded, I swear to God, please, you got to help me. Just take a look at the tree. He took a look at it, the gentleman and the staff at DPW did a good job by assessing it and I believe they're going to take down the tree, I'm going to be able to enjoy my football on Sundays. So, kudos to Mr. Conrad.
When the Lions win.
When the Lions win.
That's a great saying.
That'll be never.
They come in close.
I also wanted to just take the time here to congratulate the mayor and welcome on our new Corporation Counsel. So, Mr. Frito, welcome aboard, I'm looking forward to be working alongside with you. And then the last thing here is actually amazing news, it's actually, it's been a long time in the making, so I just want to give you guys a quick story on what's been happening. Since last October, I'm sorry, about two years ago, Councilman Muscat, maybe seven years ago, Councilman Muscat approached me and told me, you know, the churn left signal on Ford Road and Gully, we need a churn left signal on Ford Road and Gully, we need a churn left signal on Ford Road and Gully. And I know a lot of people played a role into trying to hopefully getting to a churn left signal on Ford Road and Gully. One day I was sitting down at work, my buddy called me, said I got into a huge accident. I said, where? He said, Ford Road and Gully. True story, two weeks later, my buddy got into a huge car accident where at Ford Road and Gully. I picked up the phone, I reached out to my buddy that works at M.D.A., I said, who can I speak to that's all the way at the top? Mr. Conrad knows, I don't give up. I'm going to keep calling and emailing and calling and emailing and I'm going to flood you. So, last October, I reached out to a buddy of mine and he sent me over to a man by the name of Feisel, actually a lady named Mrs. David, Mrs. Davis. Mrs. Davis sent me over to the engineer. Here we are, close to 11 months later, today I received an email at 6:00 PM, walking in here saying, congratulations to the city of Dearborn and Dearborn Heights, they've officially approved the churn left signal on Ford Road and Gully. So, this is a huge milestone for the city of Dearborn Heights, I know this is just one of very many. I do want to thank the administration, I know they played a huge role in that, I know our state senator played a huge role in this, our county commissioner played a huge role in this, and this was a collaborative effort. But the good news is, hopefully that churn left signal will no longer be putting jeopardizing people's lives and will be able to minimize some car accidents over there. So, I just want to share that news with everybody here today. Councilman Bedeun? Yes, sir. I tip my cap to you. When I, when I ran into a brick wall on this, I turned to you and you did a fabulous job and I can't thank you enough because that was something that was really near and dear to my heart was that intersection. I see so many cars running red lights there, so thank you, thank you, thank you for your efforts of, of keeping it up and I, and I knew I turned it over to the right guy. Thank you, Councilman.
And aside with that, this weekend, go green, go Lions, hopefully the one that won for our council chair.
That's right. Thank you.
What about you?
Any other council?
That's a little bit.
Councilman, go ahead.
Yes.
No, no go. I have ordered no bad comments about the Lions, please. Go ahead, Councilman.
All right, there will be no Ekor's Creek Commission meeting this month, however, we do have a very important meeting about the Ekor's Creek. The state is involved, I believe, the mayor, that we have flyers, I believe, out front with more additional details. That will be at Robesha High School's Auditorium on September 20th at 6:00 PM. Again, 6:00 PM at Robesha Auditorium on the 20th. We do at this point intend to have our South Dearborn Heights Civic Association meeting on September 22nd, 7:00 PM at 3335 South Beach Daily, the admin building for Westwood Community School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other counts from council members?
Council Chair.
Councilman?
Thank you, Council Chair. As someone mentioned, school has started, there's still everywhere speeders speeding around the neighborhood. I remember the death of the young girl in East Dearborn, just outside of Detroit, a client of mine lived on that block and it would, you know, we, we don't want anyone, any child going to school hit and killed like that happened. The tree ordinance is really a good thing to have, particularly the sycamore trees and particularly, I'll say, in the south end. They just grow and grow, they're hardy trees and they'll, they'll knock up the sidewalk and the roots will grab the pipes going into the house, so homeowners will now have a remedy other than to wait and call and tell the city the tree is diseased and can they please come and cut it down? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members with comments?
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, 9E, where we amended the budget to increase, put the money from the general fund or for the golf course to $2.5 million. I wasn't going to vote no on that, but it's like beating a dead horse because I know everyone else is going to vote yes on it, because I am 100% in favor of the golf course and 100% against spending $2.5 million of taxpayer's money on it. That being said, I mean, it's, I've, I want that golf course open, it never should have gotten this far where we had to spend $2 million to get it open, you know, just to get it open. But like I said, I wasn't going to vote no, but I just didn't want to beat a dead horse there. And I had a question to Director Conrad about the tree ordinance, piggyback, but Ray asked, I'd ask another question, so can you come up here just for a second, please? Now, when, when someone applies for a permit to cut down a tree on city property, do you have the option to say yes or no, and if so, what's the criteria you use?
I would, I leave that up to my staff to determine. I mean, I'm not a tree expert, I mean, they deal with trees every day, they review these permits on a daily basis, so the criteria for them to be removed is entirely them. But I mean, if the homeowner is paying to have the tree removed, then, you know, it's very much going to be granted. Primarily what they're looking at is, you know, what are they removing? How much are they removing? I mean, if it's just a right-of-way tree, that's just one removal, one replacement, but in some cases, if it's a development of a property, sometimes there's several trees removed and they're going to require them to either replace in kind with trees or deposit money into our tree account or into our tree fund to fund replacement trees in the right-of-way for us. So, I mean, you know, it's, you know, that, that's what I pay them to do and, or the city pays them to do and that's, you know, so I mean, I leave that expertise up to them to determine, you know?
Okay, so what you're saying, if I catch it, there's just about anybody that wants to cut down a tree on city property, it's going to be, a permit will be issued for that?
Wait, let me just clarify, just want to make sure, it's on?
City property.
City property, right, but on their own home? You know, as a part of their own home?
Well, does it have to be on their own home?
The, the, yes.
On their property, on the easement.
The permit is for anybody who wants to take, take down a tree anywhere on their property, whether it's in our easement, whether it's in our easement or on their property.
I'm saying, on the city property, that's what I'm getting at. Now, there, you know, we don't have anything established where we could refuse a permit to cut down a tree on city, something, a healthy tree, you know, a healthy oak tree and they, they just don't like it and they want to get it gone?
I mean, we're going to encourage them not to, I mean, if they show good cause as to why, I mean, you know, I like to look at it is, you know, or I encourage them to look at, is it, you know, a nuisance tree? If it's a sycamore tree, which we consider a nuisance tree, a willow tree, there's, there's many trees that are on our do not plant list. If it's one of the trees on our do not plant list, I mean, I feel that if a property owner wants that tree removed, they should have it removed. You know, if it's a healthy maple that is, you know, outgrowing its footprint and, you know, is, you know, the homeowner wants it gone, I mean, if it's healthy, I would encourage them to keep it, but if they want it gone and they're willing to pay for it, I'm, you know, I don't think that we should step in their way.
So, basically, any, any tree on, on city property and it's on your property, your, your home, they can cut it down basically, right?
Yes.
Now, I mean, I, I will give them a fair argument to, you know, or encourage them or try to persuade them not to cut it down, but I mean, you know, if a property owner wants a tree down on their property.
Well, it's not their property.
Okay.
No, it, it kind of is.
Yeah, I've got a lot of calls on this.
I know, but we've already had two study sessions on this, hour and a half each.
These questions have not been brought up before.
But we had two study sessions already.
They are on either city property or your property.
And we voted on it.
Okay.
So, I mean, whatever brand new study session.
Did you know the answers to my questions I just asked?
Yes, I do, because we had, again, two study sessions, everybody was there, I, Councilman, we had another study session, I'm trying to keep these meetings short and you weren't here. And this is what we agreed on, we're starting a whole new study session on this and we've already had two full study sessions and then on a third meeting, we voted on, it's already been voted on. I don't have any questions, but.
No, no, what I'm saying is, we never discussed the criteria for the city to refuse or.
Two study sessions.
Honestly, we did.
Everybody was here.
It was just a sick tree, is all I was saying.
I mean, continue, but I don't want to do a study session on this tonight.
Corporation Counsel, what happens if, if we refuse a permit for someone on this? Is there, can they take legal action against us?
Well, that's going to depend on what your reason, if you refuse it, then you have to get, give a written reason, correct? So, if you give a written reason, then you can bring it towards the DPW and have an evaluation done. So, I would follow what the written decision is and then we would take it case by case. I don't think you could set a policy or mandate, anything without looking at it one by one.
One by one, yeah, that's what I'm getting at, one by one.
I want, I want. Okay, go ahead.
No, okay, but that's, I mean, so we don't have a policy where we can refuse, we don't say, if the tree is healthy and it's not upsetting the sidewalk, we're not going to give you a permit. It's just if they want to cut it down, they can cut it down. Okay, I got that, so thank you so much, I appreciate it. Now, Director Deeb, I had a question for him. This is, this is a short question here. You know, recently, these storms we've had throughout the city, a lot of tree branches and trees have fallen on power lines and DTE's doing their job to, you know, to trim the branches around the trees. And obviously, the, the ultimate answer would be to what?
To keep the trees trimmed so they're not affecting power.
Well, I, I think the ultimate answer is have all our utilities underground, right? Now, see, it's, it's, it's like, ah, that's a lot. Why don't we start doing something like, you know, we, we missed out the opportunity at Daily Park where we put up streetlights there and we could have ran that underground, we could have started a, a project, you know, a starting project. You know, every new community that's built in the world nowadays, their utilities are underground.
True, the key word is new communities.
Yeah, so I mean, maybe we can start something, have something in a master plan where any kind of new construction from now on, you know, for commercial buildings comes from the pole down underground into the building.
So, Councilman, yes, so this is, in a perfect world, absolutely, that's the case, but we have so many other priorities that are taking, taking precedence, things like storm system capacity, sanitary capacity. We have, we have limited resources, our infrastructure is old and, and beyond its useful life. So, not just capacity wise, even, even condition, condition of the thing. So, yes, in a perfect world, if we have unlimited budget, absolutely. We're looking at green infrastructure going forward as part of our standard reviews for permits for things for development, but that is going to be phased in as opposed to have it mandatory, because it is expensive and I don't have the, the system capacity to incorporate it all at once. So, we have to phase it in and as, as you said, so we are looking at a master plan coming up and we are going to incorporate all these things as a way for us to mitigate our limited capacity. So, things like storm, for instance, and to me, that is a higher priority, even though I believe, yes, electric wiring is, is important, but storm in terms of flooding is, is also critical, because we don't have the capacity to convey the stuff. And I like to work on that in terms of priorities first and then start going forward, but that's also, we have a lot of priorities competing.
My idea is new construction. You know, and new construction, I wouldn't want to make everyone start putting everything underground, but if they, you know, I think it's something we should look into. I mean, seriously, one of the persons being without power for several days, and I know there's thousands of in Dearborn Heights that, you know, something that's simple.
Talking about the house.
I think, I think, you know, for the master plan, we should just mention it or something and get the ball rolling on that. And that'd be really good for residents.
Okay, sure.
And one more thing is the, I stress, you know, the family involvement, do things with your family. Go out and do something with your family.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
And, you know, go to church with your family. We, my family attended, you know, shortly, but we had a good time at the libraries this weekend, and I think the library director might speak on, speak on that a little bit great, awesome. But this Saturday at the Richard A. Young Center, the Watershed Stewards is holding its Fall Rain Garden Maintenance Program at 9:00 AM. We pull weeds and plant flowers, plant plants for the upcoming year. We need a lot of volunteers. We have, most of our volunteers come from the Crestwood National Irish Society, God bless them, and we want to see as many people out there as possible. 9:00 AM at the Richard A. Young Center this Saturday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other announcements from council members?
Council chair, one more tree question. I was approached last Thursday by a friend at the Eaton Center who had a question as to, years ago, this gentleman said he would take care of the problem with his tree on his yard, which was tearing up her driveway. Well, now it's gotten really bad and it's cracking all over. Who's responsible to replace that concrete?
Concrete, it's still be at the residence.
Yeah, it's on the whole homeowners.
So she's stuck.
Yes. I do want to make a quick comment regards to the tree ordinance because, you know, obviously, I pushed for that and I was all in favor of that. You know, when I spoke with the director, exactly what I had predicted, you know, a lot of people were getting into like panic mode, like there's going to be 8,000 trees taken down per block. I'm trying to remember, am I not wrong? What was the amount that you said, the number of permits for healthy trees? I think it was like three or five total in the city? It was a real low number when I spoke with you after the ordinance. Do you remember off the top of your head?
We did quite a few a week, but most of them are on, are not in the right-of-way.
Right. But the ones that had been taken down is minimal.
In the right-of-way?
Yeah.
How many? 10?
Less than 10.
Yeah, it was like three or five off the top of my head is what you told me. Okay. Any announcements from any administrative?
Council chair.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
It's been a busy week. I also want to commend a lot of the directors. I know Mr. McCaffrey did an amazing job at the library. There was, we got a lot of kids. He had, he's going to talk about it, but it was, it was amazing. A lot of residents came out to both libraries. Thank you. Also, our chief, Chief Hart, I can't thank him enough for everything that he's doing. He's spending a lot of hours over there, and there's just a lot of work. I do thank you for that. He's, I know we talk on the weekends late at night, you know, about a lot of things that come up. So, you know, I'm grateful for him being our chief in the city of Dearborn Heights. I know he's trying to do a lot of things, you know, in the city. There's a lot of initiatives, and he's going to talk about initiatives that we're going to bring back. He's going to bring, it's actually the first time in the history of Dearborn Heights, this initiative. He's going to talk about Crytek here shortly. Also, I know there was a proclamation for last, yesterday was actually Grandparents' Day, so Happy Grandparents' Day was yesterday. And one of the other things that, I just got a text from Mayor Wild from Westland. We did have, we've been talking to Waste Management, there's five communities, so Dearborn Heights, Garden City, Inkster, Wayne, Westland. We were talking about the landfill and great news for Dearborn Heights, actually for all five of us. And the contract that we have with them right now, we're going to save about $3 million. So roughly. So Mayor Wild from Westland, he did an amazing job trying to get the five of us communities or five mayors involved with the negotiations in the last year or so. So it was very, very, a lot of critical meetings, and finally, they came then to give us a cost save if we stay with Waste Management. So we have about roughly $283,000 a year savings. So thanks.
Awesome. Thank you.
I want to thank Mayor Wild. I mean, he did an amazing job with this. And also, Mr. Conrad was also involved, you know, he had, he was part of these meetings. And I know Mr. Deeb was also in some of the meetings. We had about a monthly meeting, we were meeting with Waste Management and the cities to discuss this. So thank you. Thank you all involved. That's all I got.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If I may, regarding the joint.
Super quick comment because we're done with the council, city council members. Okay, Chief said you had something for administration? Come on up.
I'm sorry, while the chief's walking, we are actually, one of the things I forgot to mention about lobbyists. So I was discussing this with various mayors in different cities, you know, the CWW and also the Downriver. So every city has a lobbyist right now lobbying for them to get money through, I know, we talked with several council members, I know some of you are pushing, trying to see if Dearborn Heights can get a lobbyist, trying to get us some money from the county, the state, or the feds. So there's a lot of money out there, especially with infrastructure money. So if you don't have somebody advocating for you in Lansing, you're not getting anything. So I want to see if we can put something together at the next council meeting, see if the council will approve, see if we can get a lobbyist for us. And it's just usually a monthly, they're not an employee of the city, we just pay like a fee. And we, I am talking to several people right now to see what we can get.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Council chair. Yes. Hey, Mayor, where's our landfill at? Which one do we use?
The one in Ramon's?
Where's that, is that?
I don't have the address, but I can get it for you.
Okay, I was just curious where our garbage goes. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry. I've driven by, I forgot the street name.
Chief, go ahead.
Thank you. The mayor had mentioned that I do have an initiative underway with a group called Crytek. It's a collaborative reform initiative, technical assistance center, you know, law enforcement, we love our acronyms. So this is a joint effort between the U.S. Department of Justice and the community-oriented policing services, the COPS Office, International Association of Chiefs of Police, National Association of Women Law Enforcement Executives, National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, FOP, a great, great group of people who are going to come out. They're thinkers, they're educators, they are, they have been through transformations in the past. And my goal is, they're going to be here for two days next week. They'll be flying in. I have two subject matter experts, Jim Golden, who I've worked with in the past, he's a former chief representing Noble. He'll be here along with Sharam Fard, who is a chief deputy with the Alexandria, Virginia Sheriff's Office. They're going to spend a couple of days on site, talking to staff, looking at vision. Ultimately, what I want is, I want a stronger connection with the community, I want more transparency. And we're going to look at our resources and how we're deploying our resources. Ultimately, my goal is to get us to a point where we can be awarded a grant to do a complete organizational assessment. So this is the first very small steps in hosting these two gentlemen next week, getting them in room with staff and other community leaders. I'll extend an invitation to council once I get their bios and their schedule here on next Wednesday and Thursday. But it's a great opportunity to grow the police department and to look at what should the Dearborn Heights Police Department look like in 2022. And no offense, it's not your department, it's not mine, right? It belongs to the community members. So we want to make sure that we are delivering a world-class product for our community, and it starts by assessing, you know, what have we looked like in the past? What do we, what should we look like right now with our call volumes? Many of our police officers are doing outstanding work, just made a second arrest on the McDonald armed robbery from a couple of weeks ago, from a couple of months ago. We just made an arrest with another agency on an armed robbery at CVS Pharmacy, recovered the gun and some of the prescription narcotics that were taken from that. So there's a lot of great police work going on. One thing about me as a chief of police, I'm never going to shy away from the good or the bad. So we'll put it all out there, and then we're going to work hard to try to solve these crimes. But that's kind of where we're heading with this group from Crytek, and I look forward to hosting them next week here in Dearborn Heights.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and go, is, oh, Chief Staff, come on up.
Sorry. So I'm just going to add on to what Councilwoman Nancy Brier was talking about with regards to MEDC coming to the city. So this meeting is about funding, which I think is very important. So because of our floods in 2021, the Department of Housing Development, HUD, has allocated $71.9 million in long-term recovery funds. So approximately $12 million of that is going to be allocated amongst the cities in our area. So this is the opportunity for us, the public and the council members, to tell them what our priorities are and how we want to mitigate this flooding issue. So I think it is very important for everybody to participate and to voice our opinion, as we know we are one of the hardest-hit cities with regards to the flood. So I do encourage all of you, as well as the residents, to participate in this public hearing and read the action plan that's available on the website, get familiar with what their plans are, and share your thoughts. That's what the public hearing is for.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Staff. Next up, we're going to go ahead and go to Zoom. If everyone can keep, I'm sorry?
Mike McCaffrey?
Oh, come on up, Mike. And then we'll go to Zoom next.
So hello, council chair and mayor, just wanted to talk about a couple of things. First off, I want to thank everyone who enjoyed and participated in our open houses at both libraries. Thanks to the fire department, the mayor, the treasurer, Councilman Tom Wunsel for coming out. Lynn, AJ, and Jim, and Carolyn worked particularly hard in making them a success. We also got some generous donations from a number of local and national businesses, including Antonio's, The Donut Shop, Midwest Tape, Libby, Abs Amazing Ribs, The Glass Academy, Dearborn Italian Bakery, and thanks to John Brown for donating drones. We had an excellent time. Also, Saturday, October 29th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at Carolyn Kennedy Library, and Sunday, October 30th, at JFK from 6:00 to 9:00, we'll be having our trunk-or-treat and spooky mini golf programs at both libraries. Come join us as we hand out treats and play mini golf in the library with proceeds going to Goodfellas. We're looking for hole sponsors, $50 per hole and trunks. For interested in doing either of those, give me a call at 313-791-3804. The program is free to the public. Any donations made are suggested for the groups to come out. And Ralphie, the odd Christmas ghost may be making appearance, so come on out. Thanks for your time and see you at the library.
Thank you, Director. Good job, as always.
Director, can you give me that date for the trunk-or-treat?
It is Saturday, 29th, for 6:00 to 9:00 at Carolyn Kennedy.
Wow, Michigan State played that day.
Oh, okay. Well, it's also on Sunday, October 30th, at JFK from 6:00 to 9:00, so.
Old Lions play that day.
Councilman Beadu will be early because that game will be over before halftime. Michigan should roll them.
Oh, man, can't wait to go to the city council meeting after that week.
Thank you, Mike.
I'll deserve it.
We're going to go ahead and go to the directors. We will start with ladies first, then we'll go Mr. Jamal, then we'll go with our fire chief. So our recreation director, Kim, please go ahead.
Hi, I'd just like to remind everybody that this Saturday, we have our Harvest Craft, Harvest and Craft Sale from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. It's definitely a family event. We start off face painting, we've got the Unicycle Group from Redford coming, we have a helicopter drop of little goodies for the kids, train rides, lots of music, country music, and I know people have been waiting for some country music. So we've got included in that a Toby Keith tribute, Art Brooks tribute, and then we've got a pumpkin judging contest, so for best carving and best painting. First, second.
Okay. Director, did you say Saturday? I'm sorry.
Yes, it's Saturday. I didn't hear you.
He's asking, was it Saturday again?
Yes, Saturday, September 17. And Target is a cosponsor, they're actually going to be raffling on two bicycles for the participants. And, you know, it's a great family event, so please come, it's at the Canfield Community Center right here. We will have a tent outside for the music.
Director, I have just one last question for you. You there?
Yes.
Is that the same day as the chili cook-off?
Yes. It is, but we did have our date set in January.
Okay.
We talked to them.
I'll be at both, I'll be at both.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Next up is our director, San Jamal, go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Good evening. First, I want to second the chief of the police that federal fund, state and fund matching the funds should be spent first when they are there. Number two, out of the Peso Road, Simcock ordered the city $9,600, thanks to Waitram, Mr. Martin, they helped get that grant, so you are not spending $17,000, you are spending $17,000 minus $9,600 to do the street evaluation. Number three, the CDDGDR, the chief of staff, talked about, it is a federal grant that actually they had allocated $85 million to the state of Michigan. Only the three entities received, Detroit, $58 million, Dearborn, $16 million, and the state of Michigan, $12.2 million to spend on Southwest Wayne County, Dearborn Heights is the most affected city among that. Thanks to the mayor, to Mariana, we were able to get with the state, thanks to the chief, the chair, he initiated that with the governor, with the lieutenant governor. So we were able to communicate, meet with MEDC. The mayor was very amped and instrumental in trying to secure a place for the state to actually, you know, do their public hearing in Dearborn Heights at Robe Shaw. So kudos to the mayor for, you know, John Behan, and do that. We were lucky that we catch that particular one, even though we don't have a lobbyist. So my second is encouraging you, since we cannot spend a penny from federal money on lobbying, even we are lobbying for grants, but we can't spend a penny. And even they can spend money on my staff to do that, even on my time when I receive federal money to do lobbying. So absolutely, there was a discussion myself and the mayor that absolutely we need somebody there that allocated money from the general fund to, when we have something like that, we need somebody to connect with the state and connect with the state.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, like I was so upset with the mayor, why would you receive any? Then we said, okay, the state can help us.
Thank you, Director.
Yeah, you know, thank you, and we're looking for about $6 million.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, Director. Next up is our fire chief, Dave Brogan.
Hello, just wanted to get that muted there. Yeah, we just wanted to be sure that we invite everyone out to our annual chili cook-off. So as you heard, it is this Saturday, so maybe before or after you visit the Harvest Festival, come on, come out and see us at Chili Cook-off Saturday, September 7th, will be from noon until 6 o'clock at Lower Parkland Park. This is our 30th year of the event. If you've never been there, it's a great event for the whole family. We have raffles, kids prizes, there'll be live music, and of course, there's plenty of food, not just chili, but we have burgers, hot dogs, pizza, so there's something there for everybody. And it's all for a great cause. This is, all the proceeds will be going to the Great Lakes Burn Camp, as they do every year, and this is a camp that's for children who've been burned in fires. And so a lot of times with a burn like that, they have a lot of scarring, and this is, it's just a great, it's very experience, the camp is great for kids to promote healing and confidence and just their general well-being is greatly improved attending, attending these camps. So our goal is to raise $10,000 to sponsor as many kids as we can, and we hit that goal every year, and I hope to do so again this year. So I hope to see you all there again, September 17th, from noon till 6:00 at Lower Parkland Park.
So it's this Saturday, and for those that have not been there, beyond being for a great cause, and I thank all the fire department, all the, and everybody in the administration that's worked on this, it really is a lot of fun. Unfortunately, going to miss it this particular year, I'll be out of state, unfortunately. But for those that have never been there, beyond being a great cause, it really is a fun event. So I highly recommend everybody go out and check it out. There's also great chili there, too, just a little side note.
Council chair, I was going to say something about the chili cook-off, but I knew the chief was going to talk about it, and it is a great family activity. They have a lot of stuff there to keep the kids interested the whole time. It's really a fun day.
Bounce, bounce house.
It's got to work. I mean, it really, like Councilman mentioned, it's a whole family event for anybody, anything they want to do, there's lots of things to do there and lots of fun. I've always enjoyed myself. Unfortunately, like I said, I'll miss it this year, but next year, I'll see you then. Okay. Any other announcements from the administration? Seeing none? Next up, we're.
Well, I'll wait until it's public.
Okay. So next up is Public Comments. Please come on up. You'll have three minutes. And then the Councilman has got a new toy here, Councilman Ray Muscat, so he'll give you an idea as far as.
I'm going to have it just like this.
How much time you've got left, so keep an eye on that.
Hi, my name is Larry Henny. I live on Hickory Court in the Hickory Ridge condominiums and in the magnificent city of Dearborn Heights. Hickory Ridge is a senior community. We spend a ton of money on landscaping and maintenance, and if any of you happen to drive through someday, you'll see that our landscaping is just beautiful, but it costs money to keep it that way. I'm here to represent the homeowners of Hickory Ridge, and we have four of them right back here, along with myself. Back in July 6th of 2020, we had a water main break. It was at Hickory Court and Inkster Road, and of course, it was between the sidewalk and the street. That's where the water line is. The city fixed the break, took them several times to come out to do it, but they did not replace the sprinkler system that we had underground in order to keep the trees and the grass nice and green. At, our maintenance man did contact the city, the Water Department, spoke to Dave in March of 2021. He waited until then, and he was told that we were on the list to have the water lines repaired and the grass replaced. He called once a month for one full year, and then finally, after one year of calling, he was told that the job was too large for the city to handle, that they would have to hire, that the city would end up hiring a private contractor to do the work. Up until today, nothing has been done, and so we're coming to you to ask you for your help to see if we can't get this taken care of.
Council Chair?
Thank you.
Mr. Hedy, get ahold of me tomorrow morning. I'll work on it with this. I just heard about this, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, get ahold of me. I'll be here early in the morning, so.
And Madam Treasurer, please let us know if you're speaking as a citizen or as a treasurer.
Yes, I'm familiar with that routine and request. First, I'm going to, as a treasurer, if through the Chair, but it's for Councilman Muscat, I agree with you, right?
Thank you.
We worked through that, you and I, and what we're talking about is those payments should come to the Treasurer's office so we can receive it immediately. It's entered into BSNA. It's, the general ledger is automatically updated, and we're keeping everything records going. So I agree with you. And now I'm going to switch hats real quick, and I did ask for a few extra minutes. I'm going to be brief, but I did ask ahead of time.
I, I'm sorry, Madam Treasurer, I did not get there, unless it was, you come up in the conversation?
You and I spoke on the phone and text.
Yeah, I know we spoke, but I don't remember allotment for an extra time, but I will allow you an extra minute, just go ahead.
All right, so.
Sorry, the name, street?
Hang on one. Let me reset this clock. I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Yes.
Yes. Can I reset the clock, please?
Yes, yes, sir.
How much time would you want to save?
Four minutes, please. I did have a conversation with the Treasurer. I don't recall that part, but I do trust her. She's telling the truth.
Okay, thank you, sir. So my name is Lisa Hicks Clayton. I'm speaking as a resident and a mother. I live on Gully Road in Dearborn Heights. As you may be aware, September is known for many things, and I'm going to speak today briefly on a really important subject, and that's that September is Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month.
Oh, I apologize. On that subject, yes.
We did talk, yes.
Yes, go ahead, I apologize.
It's a really cold and harsh reminder for some. I speak to groups and individuals alike on this subject, and you know what? I'm not an expert, but you know what I am? I'm a mother that has lived through it and received that knock on the door at 4:40 in the morning. I'm a mother that got the phone call, that forever I'm missing a voice. I'm missing his smile, I'm missing his hugs, I'm missing his laughter. But I want this to have meaning when I speak to you today, because I can't change what happened, and I can't get my son back. But we can do, as a community has come together, and not just share the 988, that's great, 988, you can dial and call, but I will tell you from experience that when somebody is in such a dark place that they feel the only option is death, they probably won't pick up that call, make that phone call. But you know what could happen? And I'm going to thank Chief Hart right now. Thank you, sir, for taking my phone call today, because what I did is I reached out to him, and I said, what can we do as a community? Because we need people that when this call comes in, they need help immediately. They need somebody then, not two days later, a week later, a month later. Give me services, help me now, when it's happening, when that person is feeling that way, so dark and despair and no way out. And you know what? Thank you, Chief Hart, for listening, and I know you're still working on some of these things, so I'm not going to rain on your parade whatsoever, sir, but I'm going to thank you, because it's part, we're talking about partnerships, whether it's Access or Higera or someone. So that person, when a call comes in or a mother calls and says, hey, I've got this situation, because I've been there. I've been there when my son held a gun to his head, all right? Send somebody who can help at the time it's happening, not after the fact, because then it could be too late, and one is too many, and that's all I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And for full disclosure, I apologize, Madam Treasurer, I thought you were referencing a different conversation that you're going to go up to speak about, but yes, we did, I did talk to you about that subject, and I did allow you the time, and I apologize for being wrong. Thank you. Come on up, ma'am.
My name is Linda Reed, and I have been here in Dearborn Heights.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Street and, well, we know it's Dearborn Heights, we know the name, so just street name, that's it.
Well, let me, I live on Dixie Lane.
There we are, that's it.
But, okay. I can say I've been here for 21 years, I can put that in there, I hope so. But here's the situation, I'm listening to you all speak, and I'm not hearing what I would like to hear. Not only that, it's like, I was listening when you, when they was talking about the trees. Now, the trees was planted when the peoples moved in, I'm quite sure, because those trees are tall as a building. It's like a great big tall building, and I'm looking at these trees in neighborhoods. The roots are coming up out of the ground. The very fact that the root is coming up, it's, anybody, even if you're blind, you would be tripping over that, and it would tell you, you need to do something about it. But I seem to be hearing, well, you can do this, and you know, you have to have this done, this done. Why can't the city, it's for intelligent people, you're human beings. Why can't the people say, do something such as this? The trees need to be cut down, but plant some more trees, because the way this weather is going now, you don't know whether you're fixing to have a tornado storm or what. When the wind blows, it blows the trees down. I haven't seen anybody in Dearborn Heights yet, you might be rich, but I haven't seen anyone look like a millionaire to me. And I said that to say this, the people are struggling. I'm looking at them. You, people getting paid to get, to have, to put out decent decisions on things, but how is it that nobody's getting help? I don't see the help coming. It's not getting help. Okay, I can see your 60 seconds, I'm going to let you go.
No, 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 keep going. You got, you got time. I'm going to give you some extra time here.
Okay, when you want me to shut up, I'll shut up.
No, 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 you got the, you got the time.
But what I am saying is this, we are all human beings. Everybody got red blood, and when the peoples are here, they are paying their bills, they are paying their taxes and what have you, no matter whether it goes up, it's not going to go down, trust me, but it goes up. Now, peoples are paying, the peoples are struggling now to pay and take care of themselves. But now, if I got a tree in my front yard, thank you, Jesus, I don't have one there, but what I'm saying is, if I had a tree in my front yard, like I'm looking at my neighbors, how they going to get it cut down if they don't have the money to do it? And when the wind blow and if it knocked that building down, messed up their home, what you going to do then? That's a human being. We are all human beings in this place, and we all need some help. And if we don't put that help out there, it's going to be the biggest mess. When I first moved here, this place was something else. Now it's going down. I'll tell it like it is, it's going down, because we are not doing what we should be doing. Now, keep on letting it go down, let's go on.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Come on up, sir. Street, city, name, please.
Hi, Theodore Maloney. I live at Hickory Ridge Condominiums, off of Inkster Road by Garden City Hospital. You all know where that's at.
In Dearborn Heights?
It's Dearborn Heights, yeah. I've been hearing, I don't know how true this, but I want to bring it up, and there's a lot of residents where I live, a lot of my neighbors are really upset with this golf course, that you guys went ahead and didn't put it to a public vote, you didn't let the public vote on it, but you went ahead and you bought this thing. Now you wanting us to pay for your improvements, and you want to tax us? No, that ain't going to go. You're going to have to do something for us if you want our tax dollars to help you with this golf course, instead of charging us for things you don't do.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else in the audience? Come on up, sir. Street, city, name.
I'm ready. Hassan Sob, John Daly, Dearborn Heights. This goes to the Chief and the Mayor. I brought this situation up to you about overtime a few weeks ago, and I filed a FOIA for it, and I still haven't received it. I know the Chief, man, came into this department, not knowing what he got himself into, and I applaud him for everything he's doing, but there's no oversight on overtime. And I've asked that many, I've asked two, three times before for the FOIA, I want overtime, and I want who signs off on overtime, and what oversight there is. I've never got that yet. I spoke with OIG's office about it, and I want that FOIA, I want it sent over to me. You guys are past your period and extension on it. I just want to know, I know the Chief always says that, you know, he's implementing policies because no policies were in place, but policy's not enough when there's theft of taxpayer money, when there's no oversight. And I'm not trying to put any of that, but, you know, I'm doing this, and I'll say it right on the record, this is tit for tat. People in the department came after me, I'm not going after them, I'm doing everything legally. It's tit for tat. I'm going after their overtime, and I'm going to go after their comp. And I know you guys are going to tell me that policies are being put in place, but who's going to investigate the overtime, the theft of overtime, what this overtime was given to, what this overtime was signed off, to who signed off on it, what oversight was, no questions are being answered on. And I understand a policy is going to be implemented in place, but are these people or certain officers that stole this taxpayer money, are we going to get that money back? Are they going to be held responsible? Or is it going to be just another policy put in place and them get a pat on the back That's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the audience? Come on up. Street, name, city.
Sheldon Cooper.
I had to ask her who that was. So did I.
Vince Dropkowski, Columbia Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
You live in Dearborn Heights?
Great Lakes State of Michigan. Keep this number in mind, this was 56, number 56. At the last council meeting that I watched on Zoom before I started counting, there was 56 interruptions on the Zoom signal. Okay? Before I left after my dinner this morning, or this evening, I had counted 15. I stopped counting. When are we going to get that system fixed? Mr. Cooper, are you out there?
No, he's not here.
Okay.
I could answer kind of sort of on his behalf, through having a conversation with him, with the Mayor, with the administration, and with Mr. Deeb and Mariana. The answer on all this, it's a problem from the Zoom, and they're still looking into it on our part, administration and Mr. Cooper, the IT Director, but everything they've seen so far, they've found so far, has been a problem on the Zoom end. I'm not a technology expert, not by any stretch of the imagination, but this is what I'm being told.
Council Chair?
Okay.
If I may, I was on a Zoom meeting last night with a.
Through the city?
No, 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 this was a private Zoom meeting with other people concerning a Crestwood School reunion. It was horrible. We ended up having to do the phone thing with FaceTime, just to communicate with one another. I believe Zoom does have an inherent problem, and not saying that this building in general could have a problem like my home does for my cell phone also, and I've got extenders everywhere, Verizon extenders and Wi-Fi extenders, so I mean, we're trying to do the best that we can, and, you know.
It is, it is on the radar of Mr. Deeb and Mr. Cooper, neither of the two that primarily deal with it.
If Zoom isn't going to work, maybe we ought to go towards an Apple system, FaceTime or something like that.
They're looking into multiple options, including the Clerk's Office, of course, that's working with them on this. This, I can tell you for a fact, it's on everybody's radar, and we don't conversate about it during the council meetings. I tell you myself personally, I've had many conversations with almost each and every one of them multiple times, it's on everybody's radar. They're sick of hearing from me, but they're not doing it because they're hearing from me, they're on it, but we'll figure out something.
And at the last council meeting, there was discussion regarding the watershed and the Ecorse Creek Commission. What's the word on that? Is there any word on keeping them separate, combining them?
So this was voted on, it was turned down, it was referred back to the administration, and they're working on the rest of it.
Okay, is that part of what's coming up on September 20th? Can I ask that?
No.
No, I can't ask that, or does?
It's not.
It's not.
Okay, just want to clarify. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else in the audience?
Council Chair, real quick, I'm sorry, an announcement. So Mr. Lee Gavin, it's going to be his last council meeting, he's decided to retire.
What?
For good now, and so he's, he's online right now, so he is retiring finally.
Oh, man.
And he needs, he needs to go enjoy himself, and I just want to tell, so Mr. Ankrup is going to be filling in for him.
Okay, you know what, if you don't mind, sir, I know this is off the protocols.
Go ahead.
But, you know, for the amount of time that Mr. Gavin has put into the city, I just want to give him an opportunity to at least say hello and just give a shout out to him, thank him for his service.
He's on Zoom?
Yes, he's on.
Oh, there he is.
Former Chief Lee Gavin?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council Chair and Council. Had a good ride, it's been a.
I just speak.
Wait, all we heard is it's been a good ride, so I'm sorry, start again.
Sorry. I want to thank everyone. I've been here over 42 years, started as Police Captain, so this is my community, I still love it. I want to thank everyone for the job they're doing. We're all in it together, together to make our community the best it can. So, yep, I've had a good career, I've worked with all of you, and I appreciate the Mayor keeping me aboard. And now for Council Chair, I'm, you know, going to put a little more time in with Lions, and I'll try to get you up, I'll try to get you.
I was looking for you, I couldn't find you.
Okay, no, I have a different job there, so I'll talk to you later.
Yeah, I'll talk to you about that. Running back? Running back?
What's that?
Running back?
Oh, no, no, cool for that stop. So again, I wish everyone good health, thanks for your support over the years, and keep up the good work.
Chief, I thank you for your service, I thank you for your commitment. I've had many, many conversations and dialogue. many, many conversations and, and dialogue and phone calls and face to face, and of course, talking Lions, talking you. I, I thank you for all you've done and everybody can put in 42 years into, into service for their residents. I mean, they got my salutes. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank you and give you actually a standing ovation for your time. I appreciate that.
Great job, man, great job.
Keep up the good work, and all together with the administration, council, and the residents, we'll move in the right direction. So thank you all.
Chief, we love you and we thank you.
Counsel Chair?
Counsel, go ahead.
You know, I'd be remiss if I wasn't able to just put some closing remarks for my good friend, Mr. Former Chief Police, Mr. Lee Gavin. Lee, I just want you to know, brother, I, I truly appreciate your service to the city of Dearborn Heights. You know, a lot of the things that you've said really embedded in me and echoed across my actions and things throughout my service. I remember being, I think, maybe in seventh or eighth grade, wrestling with a buddy of mine, and you pulled up and yelled and said, go, go inside. And, you know, I, I, I want you to know, many of the, you know, many things that you have taught this city, the services that you've done to this great city, it doesn't go unnoticed. I want to thank you and congratulate you on your retirement. Really, I'm going to miss you, man, truly. Don't be surprised if I don't pull up in your backyard with Dave Kinesik, because we're most likely going to be doing it real soon. Great job, Lee.
Thank you, Mo, and thank you, council people, and the mayor, Mariana, and everyone and all the administration. Thank you very much, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Appreciate it. Come on up, sir. I apologize, but I thank you very much for allowing us to do that, because he deserves it.
As well, he should.
Yes.
I just wanted to comment briefly on the trees.
I'm sorry, name, city, street?
Name's John Baroness, live on Dwight, Dearborn Heights. I purchased that house in 1993. I bought that house for my uncle, who originally had that house built in the late 50s. So I'm familiar with the trees that the city planted. Just like the young lady spoke earlier, those are city trees on city property. Yeah, we're responsible for the upkeep of them. And by that, I mean, when I watch the roots go through the sidewalk, I have to pay for that. When I see the roots tearing up the driveway, I have to pay for that. When the branches fall, huge limbs, 25, 30 foot, six, seven inches in diameter, children playing, people walking, I go out there, drag that out of the street, bring it up, call DPW. They come, they assess it, they pick it up, take it away. I don't think it's fair or just that taxpayers have to be responsible to take down that tree. I don't know how you guys came up with an ordinance that allows me to pay to take down a tree that the city planted and has caused nothing but problems. I'm all for trees, good trees, healthy trees. But the trees that the city planted are not beneficial to the community. As a matter of fact, it's harming our community. They're destroying our property. We should not be responsible for something that you plan, not you individually, but the city. And all's I'm saying is, I'm not coming to you with a problem, but hopefully with a solution. Because when I hear about, we've got $2 million to buy a golf course, and I'm not beating up on the golf course, whatever it is, wherever we're finding money from the general fund for this and money for that. Look, back in the day, you used to get your streets swept every day after garbage day. Now who sweeps them? The citizens do. We get out there and sweep up the curb. Why? Because this is where we live. We want it to look nice where we live. All's we want is some cooperation from our city council, the mayor, the administration. We want something to work with us, whether you guys got to do a study session or whatever it is. And I'm open to comments from you guys, because you can comment on our comments.
Right.
I know you're not obligated to, but it would be nice to hear some feedback of how you think that it affects the citizens. Because as we all get elderly, the next time that 30-foot branch drops out in the street, that's not my responsibility to pick it up. I'm not responsible to go sweep up all the leaves and pick up the branches that clog up the gutter, and then we get floods in our basement. These are all problems created by city trees.
Sure. So I'll give you three quick answers on that. Number one, I can tell you the, the ordinance that we have in place, as far as people in general being responsible for the trees and the easement, that's pretty much, as far as I know, I can tell you, as a Realtor, almost, I mean, I own every city, but a lot of cities, that's, they follow the same protocol, number one. Number two, in regards to the tree ordinance, I pushed for that, and you have no idea how difficult it was to get this through. But I can tell you this, we did talk during the two study sessions that we had, we mentioned, at least I mentioned, we're going to go through this, and we will see best practices. Any ordinance that's in place is not etched in stone.
Right. What was the purpose of creating that ordinance? What prompted that?
Can I ask you that real quick?
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm going to tell you, so you're, what this tree ordinance does for you is, if, so we have a three-year waiting list. If we can't get to your tree, and you have the funds to be able to take it down, we are now giving you the permission to go ahead and take it. But you are not forced to. Today, there's a tree where Mr. Conrad went out and checked out, that's destroying the concrete. He saw it, it was in way of electric, and the city's going to go out and take it out.
See, I'm going to get with Mr. Conrad quickly after this meeting, because I've done my own little research, because last year, I saw three beautiful trees taken down on Charlesworth, just south of Ford Road, just north of Ford Road. How did they get these taken down? I called DPW, I got the spiel. Well, if it's a healthy tree, blah, 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 we don't touch them. But those are good trees. So then I see on Midway, city's going through, cutting down trees. I've got the addresses of them. I'll get with you after the meeting, because my question is, if you can get your tree cut down, you can get your tree cut down, you can get your tree cut down. And I'm not hating on anybody, but then what's wrong with my taxpayer money?
You said you live on what street, Dwight?
Dwight.
I'm on Amblay, I'm right around the block.
And I'm not the only neighbor, because I know a good neighbor across the street. She's been pushing, she actually paid to have someone come out and trim a city tree. I said, you're out of your mind.
Can I tell you the truth? The mayor did the same thing. I swear. The mayor had to have this tree.
I paid out of my own pocket.
And paid for it out of his own pocket. He's the mayor of the city.
I'm retiring from the post office, simple civil servant, so it's like, I'm not looking, like I say, I got no problem going out sweeping. I'll sweep the neighbor's stuff, I'll pick up their branches. But I am not paying to cut down a city tree. It's bad enough I got to pay to replace city sidewalk because of the damage caused by a city tree. Does that sound right to anybody?
I, I do see your point, sir. And, and, and again, any ordinance at some place is not.
I understand that, I understand that.
This is, keep in mind, we're going to go through this, the director's watching it, administration's watching it, and obviously, we're going to put through best practices. So if we, as a body or as a whole, feel, you know what, we need to tweak this again, we could, we could bring it back next week and tweak it.
And I know I'm over my time, but my, my whole thing was like, everybody wants trees, but I think that we should recognize that these trees that were chosen to be planted years ago were a bad decision. So I think we're at the point where we do have to remove the trees and replace them with some nice trees.
Counsel, when you said you had.
I gladly pay for my new tree, as long as you pay for the other tree to come down.
Okay.
Because why should I pay $2,000 to have a tree taken down? I got two in the back that DTE hacked up. I have to pay to have those taken down.
Thank you, Counsel Chair. Former Mayor Ruth Canfield used to say that, you know, her father, he was the first, first supervisor, then mayor of Dearborn Heights, liked a lot of trees. But having said that, not, not all the trees were, were planted by the city. And as the city gets older, older suburbs like Dearborn Heights, Redford have problems. But we changed the ordinance. The ordinance was, if the tree was on the tree lawn, and it wasn't diseased, it had a stake.
Right.
So now, we've changed the ordinance, so residents can.
Get rid of some of the.
Get rid of it. And we're going to see, you know, how this goes. As far as the leaves and, you know, the, the houses are getting bigger, the trees are getting bigger, it's a problem in a lot of cities. But we hear you, and, and this is the first step.
And this is just my last comment, because to me, to set up an ordinance, to put an ordinance in place like that, to allow people to go ahead and cut down a very healthy tree, which we've always been against, that just to me is some type of admission that we do have a problem. Or if not an admission, acknowledgement, that something needs to be done with these trees.
Thank you, sir.
Because we're totally flipping where we're letting them cut down.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you for your comments. Come on up, sir. City, street, name, please.
My name is Don Henson. I live at 3929 Parr D. I've been to the building here four or five times, been a pest this summer. I'm not communicating properly. My sidewalk flooded at the end of March last year. And my neighbor cemented over, or built a building on the back of his home that covered over 50% of his backyard. I wanted, volunteer, be happy to pay for a, I'm sorry, drainway through. I live four, house from one end of the street and about eight from the other. That's where it meets. I've had two suggestions that I raise my sidewalk a little bit, twice from city personnel. That means, instead of going eight foot to the street, here we go 40 foot to my driveway. That doesn't make any sense to me. I would like to see, and I'd be happy to pay for it, but half of it has to be on my neighbors, because it's between our properties. So therefore, I want a drainway through there. And if it requires a curb cut, which I recommend, so it doesn't flood this year, I'd be happy to pay my half of it. That's all I got to say.
I appreciate it, being done.
For that, sir, what you may want to do, I mean, we appreciate your comments and everything, but us as a body, obviously, would not make a decision on that. It's best to start with administration on that. So I would talk to either the building, building department or ordinance.
Counsel Chair, my suggestion to the mayor is maybe get ahold of Rick Ratlin in the engineering department, and take a look at that, over 50% of the cement, and see what we can do. I mean, what's right is right. And if the person was wrong, then we got to make it right, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, sir. Okay. Okay. Sir, sir, write down your name and number, sir. Right here. Write down your name and number, if you don't mind. Give it to Mariana right there in the center. She'll personally make sure that somebody from the building department contacts you and see if they can find a resolution to this. I promise you that, they will do it. Okay? Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the audience? On once, twice?
Move to adjourn.
Well, one sec, let's make sure there's nobody on Zoom. Everybody on Zoom? Madam Clerk, I don't see nobody, unless you do. Okay? Move to adjourn? Move to adjourn by Councilman Bedun, seconded by Councilman Brier. All those, I'm sorry, we got to vote on that. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.